Thank you very much for joining us tonight. So, the High Holidays are coming. And the only thing that I can say with certainty is that this year will be unprecedented, unlike anything that we have ever experienced. We have been very busy at Adath, planning amidst the uncertainty. And we need your help. We need your input. We want to be responsive to you. That's the purpose of this evening. So, I will speak for just a short while. And I want to give you a sense of what our thinking is so far. Everything is tentative. But for the bulk of the session, I want to listen carefully to you. I want to take note of your input, respond to your questions and concerns. I'm very grateful to Stu Gutman, our programming director, for running this session. And after I speak, you can raise your hand from the Zoom controls or you can ask your question in the chat. Hold on, let me just check to see...
It's working, it's working.
It's working, okay, good. So you can, or you can some other way get Stu's attention and Stu will feed me the comments and the questions and I will do my best to respond. So that will be in just a few minutes. The High Holidays, Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, they're about a lot of things. They're about family, tradition, celebration, connection with the past, emotion, music, inspiration. But ultimately, the High Holidays are about serving God. And there is a priority among the mitzvos, the commandments of the Torah. And the highest priority, the commandment that comes before others, is to protect health and safety. This year will be different. It will be unprecedented. It will be unlike anything any of us have ever experienced. We make these changes because this is how God wants to be served now. So that next year with God's help, we can go back to normal or the new normal. And at this moment, we are called on to rise to the occasion, to make it positive, to be creative. We understand that some will decide not to attend services this year. We respect that. To be cautious about our health is a mitzvah. It is praiseworthy. And we look forward to welcoming you when you are ready to return. I do ask that you make your decision taking into account the precautions that we will be taking, which is what I hope to describe to you over the next few minutes. Now, we're planning at the moment for two scenarios. Realizing that the reality when it happens might be completely different. So we will be flexible, we will be creative, and we will remain true to our mission. And our plans will incorporate your feedback. One last introductory note. It is likely that we won't, will not have definite plans until just before Rosh Hashanah. And whatever plans we have could change at the last minute. It is essential that we are able to communicate with each other easily. If you are not receiving our regular emails, please send me your email address so that we can be able to be in contact as the High Holidays approach. If at some point you were getting our emails, but they stopped, please know that that happens a lot. It's something that is out of our control. It has to do with the website program that we use for emails. It happens very often. Please let me know if at any time you stop receiving emails and I will fix it for you. So, the two most likely scenarios for the High Holidays that we're planning for at this moment. One scenario is that things are basically like they are now, more or less. A second scenario, I hope it does not happen, but it is certainly a possibility. A second scenario is that we have a second wave. And in that case, we will not be able to hold services. And if that happens, like for Pesach, like for Shavuot, we will do numerous Zoom sessions in advance. We will offer many resources by email. We will make calls to offer assistance to anyone in any way that we can. And we will not compromise on safety. I hope that does not happen, but it is a possibility. If the situation is more or less like it is now... So first of all, I'm very happy to tell you that we now have a beautiful tent that takes up all of our garden. It is open on all sides. We will have a solid wood floor. We will have the comfortable seats from our social hall. We can seat about 60 to 70 people with two meters distancing. And we are holding services there now, every day, morning and evening, including Shabbos. And I invite you, please join us. It is wonderful and beautiful to be able to daven outside together. For the High Holidays, again assuming things are roughly the way they are now, we will also be using our main sanctuary, where we can seat about 80 to 90 people with two meters distancing. For both locations, here are the precautions that we are planning and they are subject to change based on your feedback, based on the circumstances that exist, based on government regulations and expert medical advice. But this is what we're planning at the moment. This year, there will be no chazan, there will be no choir, there will be no congregational singing. The medical experts have made it clear that that activity raises the risk of infection and we will not take that risk. Probably, I will not be speaking during services. Again, it depends on the situation. If I do speak, it will only be very briefly, perhaps two or three minutes. There will be no distribution of honors this year. Whoever is reading the Torah will take all the aleos himself. That is the procedure we're using now so that we do not have to have people standing close to each other. It will be required that every person wears a mask covering both the mouth and nose at all times. We will also require two meters physical distance at all times, plus frequent hand washing and sanitizing. Our staff will be doing frequent cleaning of all high-use surfaces. We have placed fans in the restrooms to enhance air circulation. And in our sanctuary, we will be adjusting the HVAC system for better fresh air circulation, all measures to lower the risk. For each service that we have, we will have a designated safety... I'm sorry, safety monitor. A person whose job it is to ensure that the guidelines we have are being followed. In addition, there will be a non-Jewish worker who will record the name and phone number of every person who attends in case contact tracing becomes necessary. We will not admit anyone who has symptoms of illness or who should be in isolation or quarantine. Of course, we will have robust security for both the indoor and the outdoor services. Now, what we're thinking about at this moment is that we're planning for multiple services throughout the day, both inside and outside, based on the demand. And we are considering at least two or three different kinds of service. And what we do will be based on your feedback. So, one option is to have a full service that is abridged so that the entire service will take no longer than two hours. So that's two hours from start to finish. There will be shachris, Torah reading, musaf, shofar blowing. If things are the way they are now, the shofar will only be blown outside. So if we have a service inside, shofar will only be at the conclusion of the service. We'll go outside to hear the shofar. So that is a full halachic service, but abridged to make it fit into a two-hour period because we don't want people to have to be together for a long period of time. That's one option. Another option is a one-hour creative service, a service of highlights. And that might look something like this. A shortened Torah reading, the silent Amidah for musaf, the silent prayer for musaf, and maybe a couple of the well-known prayers, like an Asana Tokef, and then shofar blowing. One possible plan, and again, we are flexible, we want your input, but, and there are a lot of ways to organize this, but one possible plan might be at 7:30 a.m., we would start a two-hour service inside the sanctuary and at the same time, a two-hour service outside in the tent. Two services going on at the same time. That takes two hours to 9:30. We leave one hour free to allow for a complete and thorough cleaning and sanitizing. And then at 10:30, we offer a one-hour service. One service inside, one service outside. Maybe then at noon, we would offer another one-hour service, one inside and one outside. And depending on the demand, we would offer as many services as there are people to come. Plus, another idea that we're considering, we're considering possibly adding a shorter 45-minute service sometime in the afternoon that is directed to families with small children. For example, with Lala Leslie participating and shofar blowing, something that children would be interested in to be able to accommodate children at a special time. Probably, there will be no assigned seats this year. But we will have to require registration that everyone must register for which service they want to attend in order to make sure that we do not exceed capacity at any given service. Now, that's just one way of arranging it. There are many alternatives to it, but that is our thinking as of this moment. So, now, I'd like to finish my part. And now I'd like to invite your feedback, your input, your questions, and I'm going to ask Stu to help me to feed them to me and I'll try to respond one by one.
Hello, alright. So, the first question that I have, Rabbi, do you want me to tell you who it's from or do we want to keep them confidential?
Let's keep it confidential.
Wonderful. So, first question, will families be able to stand together?
That's an excellent question. So, what I think will happen is we will place all of the seating two meters distant. But people who are allowed to be together, let's say, family members living in the same home, will be able to put their seats closer together. So, we ought to be able to accommodate that. So, and we will try to accommodate that. That's one of the reasons, by the way, that we will not be able to assign seating because we don't know how many seats will be used up and whether people will not all be sitting individually. Some will be sitting with a child or a relative with whom they are living. So, in order to accommodate that, we're going to try to accommodate that.
Wonderful. Now I have over here, can you see this, Stu? The answer is yes. Sanitizing in between the one-hour services?
Yes, definitely, definitely. So, we will have to have increased staff for those days and full sanitizing between every... between every service. So, I mentioned like, if you had a service at 10:30 till 11:30 and then leave an hour for cleaning, the next one would be at 12:30. And we have up-to-date guidelines from CDC, from Canada Health on the guidelines for that sanitizing and we will be following those guidelines.
Wonderful. Let me keep scrolling up because I keep losing it in the thread as we go. Are you giving out machsirim or each one brings their own?
Okay, so that's a great question. So, our thinking at the moment is that as we have done in the past, we will ask everyone to bring their own machzar. As many of you know, we do have a few machzorim. And our understanding from our medical experts is that it is perfectly safe for us to be able to lend them out as we have done in the past. Because on the first day, they will not have been used for a year. And so, there's certainly no difficulty. And even for the second day, 24 hours will have passed. We have been assured by medical experts that allowing 24 hours to pass is perfectly safe for books like a machzar to be able to use. If those guidelines would change, our practice would change. But at the moment, based on that advice, we would be able to make available the few copies that we have. But we would encourage everyone to bring their own. It would be easy.
Alright. What's the plan for inclement weather?
So, for the service inside the sanctuary, there's no problem, it's inside. For the service outside, so I told you, we are davening now in the tent. You may have noticed today is quite rainy. Last night was raining very hard. Our service was delightful. It's open on all sides. It was a nice cool breeze. No one got wet. As I mentioned, there will be a hard wooden floor. If it should be so inclement, we do have panels to put on the walls of the tent. Of course, we would not enclose it completely. Maybe use a couple of them to shield some of the wind. So far, with the weather that we have had over the last 24 hours, that has not been necessary. But we have that possibility, should it be necessary.
Alright, this is actually the first that I've heard of this one. Hello. What I thought is, would it be possible to block off part of the streets where Adath is located and place seats right onto the road? I realize it requires alignment with authorities and people living in the neighborhood houses, the ones living in front of the building. This way, we could accommodate more people in the open air.
So, that is certainly something that we can look into. And we will make a note to look into that. Just a couple of items to keep in mind. I know that Hamstead Security recognizes that it's necessary to have access for emergency vehicles. And we would never do anything that sacrifices safety. So, that's one concern. Another concern would be ensuring security in a more open spot. Keep in mind that our garden actually is quite well-protected. Although it's not visible from the street, but the way the garden is set up, there are trees and there are some boulders within the trees that actually act as a protection. So, we would need to take into consideration security and the weather and safety. But that certainly is something that we can look into.
We're being told also, a comment, that acoustics are very good in the tents.
Yes, that is a very big advantage. We have been davening outside in the garden for several weeks. One drawback to that, of course, is the rain. The other drawback is it is very hard for sound to travel because it dissipates. And just in this last day that we have the tent, and I'm so grateful to our lay leadership that have arranged for this tent. It is a wonderful, wonderful thing for us. The sound is much better. So, that would be a consideration.
I was in the tent today. It was really nice and a rainy, rainy day to share with you guys. Rabbi, we have somebody who wants to ask a question verbally. Are we comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
Alright, Nicola, you are up. I'm asking you to unmute yourself now.
Yeah, it's Albert who wants to ask a question.
Actually, it's Albert who wants...
Yes, hi Albert, of course.
How are you doing, Rabbi?
Excellent, thank you.
I think the first thing I would like to say is congratulations. It's very important to say congratulations and thank you because I can see that you have put a lot of work and a lot of thoughts on something that is so important. It's very unfortunate that we're in that situation, but you have thought basically of almost everything. So, thank you and congratulations. Now, one question I wanted to ask you is, how do you intend to ask the congregants who's interested in participating in the morning? Okay, because the sooner you get this information, the sooner you know how many people, the sooner you project how many services, where and when. So, what was your intention? That was my first question. My second question is, my understanding is, I was concerned about the other tents during the High Holidays, but it's not going to be a problem because it's going to be gone. So therefore, this is not going to be a crowded area at that point in time. I was concerned about that one, but I think I answered my own question. And my other thing is, in terms of cleaning, I know you have people, but are we using between services, especially inside the congregation? The, I don't know exactly what product they use, but they sanitize every seat that people sit down? Is it a very thorough cleaning? Because if it's not, it could be a problem. So, these were my comments.
Okay. Albert, thank you for all of that. Let me respond to each thing that you said because everything that you said is very important.
Albert, I'm going to mute you again. Don't take it personal.
Thank you, Stu. Number one, Albert, thank you for the kind words. I want to make it crystal clear that although I am the one on the screen and I'm the one that is speaking, it is not me. I am part of a team. I am part of a wonderful team. And everything I'm sharing with you is the result of a collaboration between the clergy, the staff, the lay leadership especially, who has been spending hours and hours and hours working on this just to reach this point. So, I will accept your compliment, not for myself, but for the entire team that is working on this. And it is a privilege for me personally to work together with such a wonderful team in this collaborative way. Number two, we are planning, hopefully tomorrow, to send out a survey asking people what they want and what kind of service they would be interested in with several other questions. We're waiting till tomorrow to send the survey because what we put on the survey will be updated based on this session tonight. So that will be the first survey that we send. And we will be doing follow-ups as we get closer because we realize, number one, the situation can change between now and then. And number two, people can change their minds between now and then. So we will be doing several surveys through email, also through direct phone calls to be able to get that feedback about what people want. We will try to get, to have as much communication as possible so that we can plan adequately. Let me just mention concerning the tent. So, let me clarify. First of all, let's all remember that the parking lot does not belong to Adath. It belongs to the town of Hamstead. And it is Hamstead's decision who will make use of the tent. Now, through longstanding tradition, we at Adath have had access to the tent as Nahar Shalom, the Sephardic synagogue across the street. And it was a joint decision that Nahar Shalom would be able to make use of the parking lot for their tent since we have the garden space to be able to use. And I can tell you, after having been now in our tent, I'm very happy with that decision. The plan at this moment, subject to the agreement of our lay leadership. So, I don't want to jump the gun, but the plan at the moment is that they will maintain their tent in the parking lot through the High Holidays. Keep in mind, Nahar Shalom has a membership that could not possibly have services with two meters distancing. They would only be able to fit a handful of people in their building for those services. So they really rely on it to survive. It would not affect us at all. In fact, there would be some benefits. It would mean that the security that we have would be shared, additional security watching all of us. It would mean that we would have the beauty of an Ashkenaz and a Sephardic services side by side, which I think is a tremendous and wonderful, beautiful thing. We're enjoying that now. And I think that any issues of crowds, we would work together in a collaborative fashion to make sure that we are both acting with safety. I can tell you this. Our experience so far, over the last, whatever it is, number of weeks that we've been davening outside, our experience with Nahar Shalom has been two things. Number one, they have been extremely careful about safety, just as we are. And number two, they have been extremely cooperative and collaborative. And I'm very, very happy with how this is working out. So hopefully that will continue. Coming to your last question about what products we will use to sanitize and what methods we will use, what I can tell you is we will follow the best available guidelines that there are. For example, this is something that we have heard from our medical experts, but I'm not giving a final opinion about this because we want to verify and we want to get closer to it. We have heard from our medical experts that it is not so important to sanitize the fabric on the seats. It is extremely unlikely that anything could be transferred from the fabric. What is much more important are the high-use surfaces. So that's doorknobs, handles, railings, bathroom services, bathroom surfaces, et cetera. So, but again, I'm not giving a final answer. The answer to your question is yes. We will be doing a full sanitizing based on the recommendations of the government and medical experts at the time. And we have the products to do that with and we will have the manpower to do that. So I think that that responds to all the things that you said. And Albert, I thank you very much for your helpful comments. And Albert, I thank you very much for your helpful comments.
Amazing. So now I'm gonna move in. There's a couple of tiers to this question over here. So the first part of it is, which medical person has assured people that a tent is safer?
Okay. Excellent question. When COVID started in March, the Montreal Board of Rabbis started meeting very frequently because all of us face similar challenges. And we have, in some ways, coordinated our efforts among the synagogues, some more than others. One of the first things that we did back in March is we established a medical team. That is, a team of doctors. They happen to work at the Jewish General. They are experts in public health. And also, they are on the front lines of treating coronavirus. That means they see firsthand what is happening, and they are up to date with the latest research and findings from all over the world. That is the primary team that we have been using and relying on for our medical decisions. In addition to that, excuse me. We have also, we, ADAP, and a couple of other synagogues, we have also been relying on several medical ethics. I'm sorry, several medical experts that are serving the population of the OU, which is worldwide, and the RCA, Rabbinical Council of America, of which I am an officer and a very involved member, past Vice President. And there are a couple of renowned experts. One of them, by the way, is Dr. Anthony Fauci, who briefed us a few weeks ago, and we hope to be hearing from him again. So that is another side to the medical expertise that we have. So those are the two teams, I would say, that we are using. We are being very cautious. I am proud to say that we were among the first synagogues to close. No synagogue closed before us. We are being extremely vigilant and careful. And I'm also proud to say that my impression is, among the entire ADAP community that I speak to, and we're calling people every day, and we talk to people every day, that the ADAP community in general is being very careful and cautious, and I'm extremely proud of that. We are leaders in this community in being cautious and careful about these medical issues. And it is my intention to remain in that kind of leadership position to this community. But those are the medical experts that we've been using.
Wonderful. The second part of that question was pertaining to the tent. The circulation is not ideal when the roof encloses. Where indoors, there's an HVAC and there is more circulation.
Okay, so that's an excellent question. So I can tell you, you will hear different opinions about that issue. Excuse me. As I mentioned, we are in close touch with our HVAC company, the company that does the work for us or our HVAC system to enhance and increase fresh air circulation. So there are measures that we're taking. We have improved the quality of the filters in our system. There are some windows that we can open. There is a way to slightly increase the amount of fresh air. I've actually been participating in some Zoom sessions led by HVAC contractors discussing this. So I've been learning a new trade a little bit. So that is one aspect. In general, the medical experts that I mentioned before have made it clear to us that their feeling is, the tent is more safe because, yes, even though there is a roof, that is correct. However, there is clear airflow on all four sides. But I want to make it clear, that is not a decision that we will be making for anyone. Each person will, that's why we're gonna offer both. Let me rephrase it. We're offering both, an indoor service and an outdoor service because at this moment, both meet our requirements for safety. Of course, if something changes, it could be different. But at the moment, both of them are acceptable to us from a safety, health perspective. And then it will be up to each person to decide what they're most comfortable with, and that is exactly the way it should be.
Wonderful. Let me go back and scrolling through. What about the sounds from the other tents? And what about the sounds from the train?
Okay. Those are excellent questions. Let me take it out of order. The sound from the train is a bit of an issue. So sometimes it just goes by in its a few seconds, and sometimes it's a bit of a racket back there. So there have been some times when we've just paused for about 15 seconds or so to let a train pass by. But it is outdoors, and certainly keep in mind, you know, there's a tradition in ADAP. It's been going on for all the 19 years that I've been here, and probably has been even earlier. And the tradition in ADAP is, during the High Holidays, everybody complains about the temperature. Half the people complain that it's too hot, and half the people complain that it's too cold. That's just the way it is. I can tell you, outside, it's even harder for us to control. So people should come prepared, maybe bring a sweater, be prepared for it to be a little warmer, a little cooler. That, of course, we're not going to be able to control. So it is open, that's what it is, but that's why it's safer, because it's open. In terms of the sound from the other tent, this past Shabbos, both of us, both services were going on at the same time. There were one or two people who were in our service who felt that the sound from the other tent distracted them. And I understand that. But there were a number of people, a larger number of people, who said to me that they very much enjoyed the sounds side by side. They found great beauty in an Ashkenaz synagogue and a Sephardic synagogue side by side, like at the Kotel. Like it, you know, it's like the Kotel, where you have this plethora of Jewish voices praising God in their unique fashion. So that was before the tent. This Shabbos, we will see. I think there will be less of an issue now that we have our tent because I think that is going to contain our sound and block some of their sound. But we'll see. So we'll have a number of weeks between now and then. It would be possible for us to put up, let's say, one of the wall panels in between that blocks some of that sound. That's certainly something that is up for discussion. We'll see over the next couple of weeks how it works, and we will take that into consideration.
So there's a comment over here about great beauty for multiple minions, which I thought that I would share. And the question that comes from a medical professional, someone who's dealing with this on a daily level since March, saying that the protocols are very well thought out. And then the question is, will you be screening everybody entering the building, for example, temperatures?
So first of all, I invite anyone who is a medical expert, is all hands on deck. I invite your input and your feedback. That's number one. The second thing I want to say is, kol ha'kavod to you. You are a hero. All of us are indebted to you and other medical professionals. You are putting your lives on the line on behalf of all of us. I cannot say enough in credit to what you and your colleagues are doing. Concerning temperature, taking temperature. So two separate issues. One is, if you would ask the question, would I, as an Orthodox Rabbi, allow temperature-taking with a digital thermometer on Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, and Shabbos? The answer is yes. Definitely yes. There is no halakhic problem because if it's needed for safety, that comes first. So there is no halakhic problem. So far, the experts that we have consulted have advised us not to use temperature checks. The reason they have given us is that temperature checks have been shown to be approximately 80% ineffective. That is, only about 20% effective. And therefore, doing temperature checks actually creates more of a problem because a person may feel that if they had their temperature taken and it was okay, well, then they must be okay, and they may let down their guard. And in fact, 80% of the people who have been tested with normal temperatures could actually be carrying, be infected with a virus at that time. Now, that's the medical expert advice that we've received so far. If we receive different advice, we would absolutely include it in our planning, and I would invite you and others to share that information. We certainly want to consider it.
There is a request to comment about Rabbi Dr. Aaron Glatt's expertise in the area. I feel that question is trumped.
Rabbi Dr. Aaron Glatt is the person that I was referring to before. He is one of the foremost experts on infectious diseases. He lives in New York. He is the person who is most responsible for advising the halakhic authorities of the OU and the RCA. There are some others, but he is on the foremost level. I can tell you that every Saturday night, a short while after Shabbos is over, he does a weekly COVID session on Zoom. It's on YouTube as well. And you can find him on YouTube. And I strongly recommend tuning in. I listen to him every Saturday night. And first, he starts with a beautiful Tov Ar Torah because he is a rabbi and he's a Tamul Kachon. And then he gives the most up-to-date, but sensible advice on a full range of questions of whatever's going on that week. So I think very highly of him, and I urge you to tune in every Saturday night on YouTube. You can listen to him. I'm sure it's recorded, so you can listen anytime. But he is certainly one of the people that all of us are relying on.
Are we planning to ask people health questions at the entrance?
That's an excellent question. So that's something that we went back and forth with our medical team near the beginning of this. And after discussing it, they recommended to us that we not do that. And here is their thinking of why they told us that. Number one, we want, we, as a shul, we want to be careful not to be giving medical advice to people that come. First of all, just from a legal point of view, we don't want to be liable. But just from a moral and an ethical point of view, it's not our position to give medical advice to anyone. And let me just be clear. If I have given medical advice so far in this session, I don't want anyone to think that I'm giving medical advice. Check with your doctor. Every person's situation is different and unique, and you need to get the advice and input from your professional, not from me and not from ADAP. So they recommended to us, because we had considered that, they recommended to us that we not ask those questions. We will ask questions, and I mentioned this before. Someone will ask, do you have any symptoms? Are you supposed to be in isolation or in quarantine? As a recommendation, we say to people who have an underlying medical condition or who are over 65 years, we say to them, we recommend that you check with your medical professional and follow their advice. But we do not impose that ourselves because that also is not a blanket rule. Every person is unique. That is what we've been doing up until now. And again, subject to input that we have from our medical experts, and I'm happy to hear input from any expert that there is.
Wonderful. Do the one-hour services meet the halakhic requirements?
Well, yes and no. Yes, in the sense that I can daven shachris by myself at home and then come for musafah and hear the shofar. So if I am going to supplement that with my own extra prayers at home, that fully meets halakhic guidelines. So the answer is yes. It's just that it will not all be in one location. But it is completely perfectly halakhically permissible to have one part of the service in one place and another part of the service in another place. So the answer is yes, in that manner.
Will children be allowed to attend?
So this is a question that requires further study. We do not have a complete answer to that. We will, of course, rely on governmental guidelines and the input of the experts. We want to make sure that children and adults are safe. There may be a difference in age versus of children who are able to sit with their parents versus children who may be running around. There may be such a difference. I'm not certain. It will certainly be a challenge. We will have to get advice and input as we go along. That's one of the reasons that we are thinking about something that is specific for children at a separate time, perhaps in the afternoon, something that has shofar blowing, that has some of the prayers, some songs, in a way that is put together specifically for children that would be a separate kind of a service. So we're going to get the input of experts, and we're gonna plan multiple scenarios for that.
Wonderful. So Sheila asked in the thread if we can repeat the name. Sheila, I sent you a text, but the name is Rabbi Dr. Aaron Glatt. So I just added that to the thread now also.
Yes.
I'm looking over here. We have Lawrence who'd like to ask a question live. So Lawrence, I'm gonna find you over here, and I'm going to unmute you. Rabbi, we'll ask you to unmute.
Hi, Rabbi.
Hi, Lawrence.
It's actually a very sad moment and question for me because I have attended Adath Israel since I was five years old. I remember walking down the keker into the old Adath Israel with my father. And that was always a special moment in my life to go to shul with him. And I never missed the Rosh Hashanah at Adath Israel since then. So, and you talk about, of course, Rosh Hashanah being a time of family, Rosh Hashanah being a time of tradition, Rosh Hashanah being a connection with the past, which is important for each one of us online with you tonight. My question specifically is, have you asked your medical experts the question of the age of the congregants and people over 70? The risks for people over 70 attending services with that number of people, whether it's in the shul or in the tent? Have your medical experts given you advice on this question?
Yes, yes. Lawrence, it's an excellent question, and I appreciate it. Yes, we discussed this with our medical experts, and we will be discussing it further, and the situation could change between now and then. So what I'm saying now is, it should not be construed as a final answer. But yes, we discussed it with our medical team, and their advice to us was, we should not be the ones to give that advice to people. We should simply say to people, you should check with your doctor because everyone's situation is unique. What we need to do is, and that's really one of the purposes of this evening is to start, we need to be very open and transparent about what we are going to offer and what we are going to do and the precautions that we're gonna take. With that information, each person should be able to go to their professional and ask, how does this apply to me? That was the advice that we got from our medical professionals. We should give the information and let everyone consult with their doctor.
Thank you, Rabbi.
That's a good question.
We've got, very much appreciate all the efforts that you are undertaking in our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have over here somebody asking if they can send you a questionnaire that they use in their work for you to see what's going on. My answer was absolutely, send the Rabbi any and all things, assuming you miss it in the email.
Rabbi@adath.ca, please send it.
So I'm out of questions over here in the thread. If I missed anybody's question, please just paste it in over here. There is a whole bunch going in.
Okay, and I have a couple of closing remarks to make. So let me make some closing remarks and...
There's one over here with that same logic. We want over here with that same logic. If people over 70 consulted with their medical professionals that say they could daven in the shul right now, would that be okay?
Okay, let me elaborate just for a moment on that, because it's an excellent question. The answer is yes, but let me explain. What our medical experts said to us is, a person who is older, the increased risk is not, there is no increased risk that they will infect someone else. The increased risk is for themselves that may, that they may become infected. So it is not, it is not correct to say that if an older person attends, it puts anyone else at risk. It is rather correct to say, what our medical experts are telling us, that an older person who attends, they themselves may be at additional risk. So that's why our recommendation is, you should ask your expert. If you're comfortable to come, it doesn't increase the risk for anyone else, and we're happy to have you. If your expert recommends that you not come, we always suggest that you follow the advice of your medical experts. But that's the reason that we are leaving it up to each individual. We're happy to have whoever wants to come, and that's our recommendation. So
I'm muted, just a second. There's one more, sorry. Can there be a bridge two-hour service later in the morning, not only at 7:30?
Yes, yes, that is definitely a possibility. So we could do, let's say, a 7:30 service, and then a 10:30 service that's two hours. And then, and then a 1:30, one-hour service, and a 3:30, one-hour service. So yes, any permutation of that is certainly possible. And it's certainly, and that will just depend on the demand. And we'll offer as many as there's a demand for.
That's all for the questions.
Okay, so let me take just a couple of minutes. First of all, thank you, Stu Gutman. You're doing such a wonderful job at running this. And I'm very grateful to you for it. Oh, I see something that popped up on my screen. What about Yom Kippur? God should give us strength to get through Rosh Hashanah. For Yom Kippur, the same thing would apply. We would have shorter services, and we would have multiple services. And it sounds kind of strange, but I was on a Zoom call with the greatest halakhic experts that guide us. And they told us it's perfectly fine to have a 5:00 PM Kol Nidre and a 7:00 PM Kol Nidre, and a 5:00 PM ni'ila and a 7:00 PM ni'ila. It's very strange. I've never experienced such a thing, but I've never experienced any of this before. So the basic plan would be similar, that we could offer multiple services, multiple locations, and even multiple formats depending on the demand. So the same basic structure could apply to Yom Kippur as well.
And we've been asked now, who will be leading all of these various services?
So we have been working on arranging a lineup of local people, wonderful people. Of course, Rabbi Alex will be front and center. Of course, Avi Gorin will be front and center blowing shofar. And we have several other people that we have already commitments from them. And they are wonderful people, and you know their names if I were to tell them. But I just want to confirm with them before mentioning their names. So we have a lineup, and we do have the personnel to be able to handle the services that I have mentioned.
Is there an age cutoff? How young, old are allowed, especially those kids that are in schools? What is being done to keep the administration, leadership, and custodial staff safe?
Okay, so let me go in order. So in terms of children, that is something that we're going to get input from governmental authorities and our medical experts. And also, since the first day of Rosh Hashanah is September 19th, it could change based on what happens with school. And so that's going to have to be a late-breaking call, which is why it's going to be so important that we're able to stay in communication. It may be that there's an age cutoff. I'm just not sure yet what that would be. That's one of the things that we're studying, and we will get the best available expert input, and we will apply that. In terms of our staff, we are being very, very careful to protect all of our staff. So all of our staff wears masks, uses gloves, distances, protects themselves. They themselves have reduced any kind of outdoor, outside activity and the number of people that they say, that they see. So we have taken those steps, and will continue to take those steps to make sure that our staff stays safe. That's extremely important to us.
That's it for the questions.
Okay, so I thank Stu, and I want to repeat that. Thank you, Stu. I also want to say
I have a question, Rabbi.
Yes.
For Pesach, you prepared something for people who did not go to shul. Were you preparing something for people who do not go to shul?
Most definitely, most definitely, yes. Extensive, frequent, numerous, there will be an onslaught. Yes, definitely. Also, we did a, what I thought was very, very moving, on the day before Shavuot, we did a Zoom yizkar. And I would expect that we would also do a Zoom yizkar, perhaps before Yom Kippur. So I would expect that we would do that as well. I want to say to everyone here, this session makes me so proud to be the Rabbi of Adath. Your questions are excellent questions. You get to the heart of the matter. And I'm very grateful for the questions. We are taking notes of everything that is being said, and we are using this, we will be using this in our planning. I want to just finish with the following, just a couple of remarks. All of us have never experienced anything like this. So we ask for your patience. We ask for your understanding. We ask for your cooperation. Finally, with all the challenges, this is an opportunity for a uniquely heightened High Holiday Experience, supercharged with meaning. Just imagine what it will feel like. Unisane tokev kudushas Hashem, kudushas Ayon. Think about the gravity of the day. The famous prayer, miyichyaumiyomos, who will live and who will pass away? And we say those words every year. But this year, we're not just saying it, we're living it. Life is uncertain. Yizkar. Imagine what that is going to be like this year, especially for those who passed away recently, that we have not been able to mourn for them the way that we would have wanted to mourn for them. This is an opportunity, a season, to reorder our priorities. It's something I'm sure all of us have been thinking about. What is really important in life? And what is extraneous and can be left to the side? And this is an opportunity for every one of us to express gratitude for what we do have and looking forward to being able to appreciate soon what we now miss. Let's show our strength. Let's show our resilience. Let's rise to the occasion so that for the rest of our lives, we will look back on this surreal period and be proud of the good it brought out in us. I am certain Adath will shine through this experience. Thank you so much for joining tonight. We will be in close touch. And I wanted to see if there were any further questions while I was speaking, and I want to address them before we finish.
The only question that came in as you were talking was, if somebody needs a shofar to be brought to their home to be blown, can that be arranged?
Yes, definitely. We have a shofar blowing team with a bevy of shofars available. And we will absolutely be willing to come as much as is humanly possible. Please let us know if you would like that. We could do it, come into your place. We could stand outside and blow it from the street. There's actually some other thoughts going on. It's not yet planned, so I'm not ready to reveal this. But there are some plans for cooperative ventures relating to shofar that would reach an even wider crowd. That's something I hope to have more details on soon.
You're getting really rave reviews over here in the thread over here.
It's the team. It's the team. It's a great team.
Yeah. I think that's it.
Thank you very, very much. This has been very helpful to us. And we will continue this type of contact. We'll send you surveys. Make sure, if you're not getting emails, you're sending it to me, and we'll stay in close touch.